Okay, thank you and welcome to the Curriculum Subcommittee meeting today on March 16. The first thing we have on the agenda is to approve the prior meetings minutes as everyone had an opportunity. Oh, and before I forget for members of the community, we are recording this meeting and we posted. Does, did everyone have a chance to look at the minutes? Or have any questions before we vote? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to pass the minutes from the prior meeting? Okay, I will move, oh, Susan will move them, I will second. We'll take a roll call vote, Barbara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we're on to our next item, I'm very excited to welcome so many of our well esteemed colleagues here to come and share information with us. I believe that our plan is to start off with our summer school conversation. And so I believe that both Meg Messini and Brendan Kobus will be reporting, as well as I believe Mindy Paolo is here. And Meg, Principal Messini, could you also tell us, tell us if there are other members that have been invited as well that we should introduce to the public?
Yes, absolutely, we have Josh Paris, who's our department chair for the math department at the high school, who's going to be presenting as well. And I'm going to be presenting on behalf of Project Discovery for Joanna Lieberman and Kristen Gray.
Great, and I guess I should have said so, Meg Messini is here from the Office of Teaching and Learning. And Mindy Paolo is here for our, I want to get the name of the department right, our English learner department, what is the official title, Mindy?
Learners, yes.
Okay, great, and Brendan is here to talk to us, summer school for the high school.
Great, excellent, I'm going to share my screen. Can you see the presentation?
Yes.
So today, we are going to be sharing about summer programs. And who is in the room is who we just introduced, Mindy Paolo from the Office of English Learners. We have Brendan Kobus from the Brookline High School, he's an associate dean, and he also runs our Brookline High School Summer School. We have Josh Paris, who is our department chair of mathematics at the high school, and he's going to be talking about the calculus project. I'm going to be talking about Project Discovery. And there's going to be two parts of this meeting, it's what we're currently offering, and then what our plans are as we come into a very unusual summer. And looking at the Office of Teaching and Learning and General Education, summer programs that we would like to offer as well. So we're going to talk a little bit about the context for summer programming as it currently stands. We'll give you an overview of the four programs we have. We'll talk about challenges and opportunities, and then answer any questions that the committee has. So again, here are our four presenters today. And just a quick context for the summer programs, so summer programs is, Brookline has a, I think, a rich history of offering a lot of different things for the summer. And we have a variety of partners, which I'll show you in a moment, but there is no one director of summer programs. So in the past, everything was sort of run under the auspices of whoever the different programs were under the office of, so recreation, for example, adult and community education, the high school, Steps to Success, so that is still somewhat the case, but now, as of four years ago, Office of Teaching and Learning has been coordinating meetings with Operations Department. So Matt Gillis and I convene a group of meetings every month to discuss and plan for the summers. Each program is self or grant funded, so there's no, you know, separate summer budget per se to run all of these programs. And that's one of the reasons we don't have one person running them. Again, our program partners are comprised of the Public Schools at Brookline, the Recreation Department, Steps to Success. And we're going to discuss the four academic programs through those partnerships, through this summer program partners today. Just to give you an idea of the depth of the departments on our end of the Public Schools at Brookline that are involved. We have the Office of School Health Services, which obviously is going to have even a more important role this summer, but every summer, we make sure that our programs have nursing coverage because we have so many children that are taking advantage of programs. Our Office of Admin and Finance and HR is involved, our Operations Department, Matt's Department provides essential services, including, you know, buildings, food services, and transportation. Again, the Office of Teaching and Learning here, all the other, all the components that are involved in that. Our Office of Student Support Services provides a deep and wonderful E S Y program at, from K pre-K to 12, and then Brookline Adult and Community Education provides Smart Summers. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Mindy Paolo, who is going to talk with you about the program that she is directing, the Summer Star Academy. So.
Good afternoon, everyone, thank you for having me. So this is actually the ninth summer where we were offering a summer program for English learners. Last year, we partnered with Metco to expand our offering so that it would include both English learners and students who are enrolled in the Metco program. When that merge happened, we also changed the name of our summer program, which is now called Star Academy. We will be holding our complete program in person this summer. And it will be held at the Lincoln School. The program serves students who are entering grades K through eight. And with the current COVID regulations that are in place in terms of distancing, we can have approximately 180 students enrolled in the program. The program is going to be five weeks long, Monday through Friday, from July 19th through August 20th. The student instructional component begins at nine o'clock in the morning and concludes at one o'clock. We also offer breakfast from 8:30 to nine o'clock, and we offer lunch from one o'clock to 1:45. Breakfast and lunch are part of the program and available to any student who enrolls in Star Academy. The program is free for all participating students and families. That is for this year only, and that is in response to some of the financial hardships that COVID has imposed on families. We are offering the program free for any student who participates. In previous years, it is funded through Title III and Metco, the grants that we have. For our Metco students, we also do provide transportation to and from the Lincoln School. In terms of staffing, we have one director, myself. This summer, we are planning to have 12 classroom teachers. All of our teachers are properly licensed, highly qualified teachers who participate in an orientation, various training sessions, have weekly collaborative meetings with each other. We also employ two student aides in the program, those are typically high school students in their junior year. But they can be any high school students, we try to identify students who may have an interest in actually becoming an educator, have an interest in the education field, and may want this experience working in a summer program with students. We also have two paraprofessionals who work in our program. And all of these additional support positions, the student aides and the paraprofessionals, work directly with the classroom teachers to support students. We also have one full-time social worker in our summer program. And that is designed to support students around social emotional needs, which is a core component of the curriculum that we use throughout the summer as well. The average class size, I don't see it here, but I'll add that the average class size is 15 students, we try not to exceed 15. But the majority of our classes are 15 students. There are two rounds of registrations, so the first round is strictly teacher and Metco advisor referrals. So English learner teachers and Metco advisors will refer students that they believe would be, would benefit the most from the summer program, and we do provide criteria to help them identify those students. Parents will then have an opportunity to accept those seats, they will be invited to participate based on the teacher referral. And then if there are any vacant seats available after that round, we do open it up to all E L E and Metco families on a first come, first served basis, based on availability for each of the grade levels. Our classes are designed by grade span except for kindergarten, so kindergarten is a standalone class. Grades one and two are in a combined class, grades three and four are in a combined class, grades five and six are in a combined class, and grades seven and eight are in a combined class. And one additional piece that we started last summer and will continue this summer, our seventh and eighth grade students participate in a very rigorous math program that is run by Dr. Adrian Mims through the Calculus Project. So seventh and eighth graders who participate in Star Academy will also have that math component built into the program. I think that's it.
Great, thanks, Mindy. I don't know if we want to ask questions about the particular programs, the four programs while we're going along, are there any questions for Mindy?
Hi.
Sure, is that you?
Yeah, it's me, sorry, I can't try to raise my hand, do everything. This is terrific, I'm really thrilled that you've been doing it for nine years, and I'm sure we see fantastic results from it. I'm wondering, with the students who aren't referred, or even those who are referred, and the ones that you open it up to, have you ever asked for donations to this program? You know, if parents want to, not.
No, there is a fee that's typically associated with this program, so last summer, for example, the fee is $50 per student, so it's a nominal fee, but there is a fee. We do try to cover the majority of all of the program expenses through the Metco and the Title III E L E grant. This year, we do know that a number of our families have experienced financial hardship, and we just don't want to add to that, and so we are offering the program for free this year only.
Okay.
Are there some budgetary implications that we need to consider because we're subsidizing those fees, or is everything sort of in the budget already, Mindy?
It's actually in the budget already, so there, nothing had to be taken away or reduced in order for this to happen.
And do you think that the number that you stated, which 180 students, is enough, or do you think you need to have more? Considering what's gone on this last year?
Yeah, our two programs combined serve approximately 1,000 students. So when you think about the number of students in our program, clearly 180 seats doesn't even touch the surface. However, we have informally just checked in with, with families, and we, we believe that there is a need, there is an interest. But we are also hearing from many families that they want to give their children a break, so I'm not really sure how to, to answer the question because it's hard to predict what families would want in a typical summer, we are at that would be the case this year.
You froze for a second, I didn't hear it, you said what, in a typical summer, and then you froze.
Or I'm sorry about that, in a typical summer, we have reached capacity, we have not ever had a year where we have any vacant seats available.
No, I'm asking the other side of it, are there many more that want to be in that don't get in, and how many are they, would you imagine?
So in previous years, yes, we have had to turn away many families. And I, that's what I mean, is that this summer, I'm just not sure, because I think there's just mixed experiences for families where some will want the program to address some of the learning loss and just to have the enrichment that's available. And I think many families feel like their kids just need a break, and in September, we'll start over again. It's really hard to know, in other years, we have not been able to meet the demand. That may be the case this summer, I'm not sure.
Okay, Meg, can I ask one question of you, you had said in the beginning that there was no money for summer programs, but my understanding is we had budgeted about 150,000 for summer programs, so I'm a little confused.
Well, Michelle and I were talking about that today, and I think we need to get clarification from Mary Ellen on that, we've been trying to get some clarification about that, so.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Should, is it okay, are folks set with Star Academy, we can go on to the next?
Actually, one other question, if there were funding, Mindy, and I guess it's just Mindy, would you be able to expand this program to all kids who wanted it? All families?
Yeah, honestly, you know, I'm a firm believer, what I am designing for 180 students would not change what I would have to design for 500 students. It's more staff to supervise, but in terms of the planning would be the same, I'd be happy to, to take on additional students if we had the funding for additional materials and staffing. Certainly, that's something that we would be very willing to do.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Jennifer?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just want to second what Helen is saying, if the, the program sounds wonderful, Mindy, and so, you know, I think we should just keep it in mind as we're going forward this summer, particularly if we get some federal or state money for summer programs that perhaps we duplicate this in another school, so we have two Star Academies going, or three, or whatever.
Well, you have to be careful with the supervision and the nurses and stuff like that.
Oh, I know, no, we'd have to duplicate it every way we can, but anyway, I would like us to keep that in mind, if we have a successful model going, to think about expanding that.
If it's worth noting, this program as currently designed is approximately $85,000.
Thank you, that's helpful, Mindy.
That's very helpful.
And so that's full in, that's not just remote, so, right, Mindy?
Yeah, that's correct, that's all in person, and the teacher's schedules are slightly different. They're required to report half an hour before and stay in a half an hour later, that's their built-in prep time, so the hours are slightly different for staff.
Yeah, I, I think that I was going to say the same thing that Suzanne just said after Helen and Suzanne got to it. I would like us to think if we, to think about this program, among other programs that we might talk about today, that if we get additional funding sources, it's really helpful to know that we get for 85,000, we are able to service another 180 students. So, Mindy, if there was another imaginary $85,000, we could opt in another 180 students, is that about accurate?
That is correct.
Okay.
Other piece that might be important to note is that we are exploring right now partnerships with Steps to Success Inc. in their internship program so that we can also bring in some of those students who are interested in internships. So currently, we're exploring having an internship with a social worker and also with classroom teachers, which I think is another really nice partnership.
That's great, that's great, if you could, I would love to know more about that as it gets sort of solidified, if it comes through, that would be really interesting to, to hear about, that's a great partnership. Are there any other questions before we move on with the next part of the presentation, so please feel free to speak out, it's a little tricky to see everyone scrolling while presenting. Okay, hearing none, Meg?
Great, so I'm going to go on to the calculus project and Josh Paris.
Hi, thanks, Meg, thanks, everyone, thanks for having me, yeah, my name is Josh Paris, I am the high school math department coordinator. I will do my best to speak about the calculus project. The directors are Lisa Rodriguez and Megan Kennedy Justice, two math teachers at the high school. They run the program for the whole year, including the summer component, I work closely with them, but they, they know this better than I do, but I'll do my best, they couldn't be here today. Um, so just a little bit of background, the calculus project started 12 years ago by Dr. Adrian Mims, who was a former dean at the high school, and has been running since. Adrian has since left to take the calculus project to a larger stage, but we're still kind of working with him tangentially. The goal of the calculus project is to support students of color in honors and advanced level math classes so that they end up taking an AP Calculus course in grade 12. Calculus is often a gateway course, both to admissions to colleges and also admissions and success in certain programs in college engineering, et cetera, and having a background, a calculus background in high school is, you know, a very much an advantage to all students, and we wanted to provide that to our students of color. One of the main components of the calculus project is this, what we call the Summer Academy. And that's what I'm here to talk about today. So the Summer Academy, we serve about 100 to 120 students of color. It's.
Sorry. I don't know why this is doing this.
I got it on my own, I can keep on going. It, it runs three to four weeks in the summer, and this year, we're planning on having it at Old Lincoln School, running three hours a day, nine to 12, basically. Through, you know, you can see the dates there, through most of July. We, it runs through students, students going into grades eight through 12. And it is staffed by one of the Calc Project directors, either Lisa or Megan, and nine or 10 teachers, all of whom, most of whom have always been Brookline teachers, both middle and high school, math and science teachers. We've had a couple of teachers from out of the district over the years to fill in some, some gaps that we needed. What we do in the summer in general is actually a lot, a big part of it is previewing the math course that the students will take. So the students are separated by grade. And we teach them some math content in the course that they will start in the, in the following fall. So that they are, can get a little head start on that, and also to prevent sort of the summer loss. To that end, this year, I think will be a bit different, you know, this is a different year, and we will be, I think, adding to that some work that the students need additional practice from, from their math class or course this, this year. So we'll be talking, like at the high school, we, we all talk to each other, and so we know what's going on with the students. We'll also be talking then with the seventh and eighth grade teachers, the math teachers, and trying to get a sense of what the students could use, you know, additional practice on, that would help them be successful when they get to the high school next year. Another piece of this is that we have teaching assistants that are students in grades 11 and 12, who are part of the calculus project. And they, you know, they act as, well, what teaching, teaching assistants do, they help out the teachers in the classroom, they make connections with the students. Part of it, part of the goal of that is to establish a de facto mentoring program between the older kids and the younger kids in the program. So that's a big part of it. Another part of it is the sense of building a community, that's a, a piece that Adrian always emphasized, is that we want students of color in high-level math classes to, to feel like they can support each other. And we begin to build that support system in the Summer Academy, so that's a part of the curriculum also. Let's see, what else? Yeah, so this is, so funding, um, this is funded through the Brookline Public Schools traditionally as part of the Office of Teaching and Learning's budget. And this year, we have been able to partner with Steps to Success to get additional, some additional funding. Many of student, Steps to Success students are also in the calculus project. And we kind of made an agreement with Steps to Success that we would actually take all Steps to Success students who were interested. And in exchange, they would provide some additional funding for some extra support. So we haven't exactly figured out what this would look like, it might be a special ed support for students in grades eight and nine. It might be an additional, you know, we might create an additional classroom, we'll have to see exactly how that plays out. And, yeah, so I think that's pretty much, what, let me check my notes, yeah, I think that's pretty much what I want to say. Oh, this, by the way, is free for students. We have talked about over the years instituting, as, you know, the STAR program does, you know, a nominal fee for students to get buy-in. And we're talking about it this year, and then for the reasons that Mindy mentioned, you know, it, the timing for that doesn't seem right. So maybe that's something we, we consider in the future, but we are basically able to accept all students who are interested, all students of color who are interested in attending the summer. Now and again, if students apply really late, and we've already, we've, we've already fixed our funding, we have to, you know, say no to some kids, but for the most part, we're able to, to accept all, all students.
I know that, I believe anyway, that we might have Lisa Rodriguez with us now, is that true, Michelle?
You'd have to ask Robin.
She's on the attendees list, yeah.
Is she?
Yeah.
So is she now in the meeting?
I can move her over?
Yeah, that would be great, just if she is, I mean, anything that you'd like to add potentially? She's one of the co-directors, I think, right, Josh?
Yeah, she is, she was here observing, I believe, as, you know, sort of a last-minute thing.
Up to you, do you feel like there's anything to add, or?
I, I, I'm, I'm here to answer, you know, we'll see if, if the, if the, if people have questions that I can't answer, maybe, but, you know, I'm happy to answer questions.
Super.
Yeah, I'm here to support you, Josh, wherever you want, hi, I'm Lisa Rodriguez, hopefully you guys can hear me.
Yes, we can, thank you, Lisa, for joining us, and thanks, Josh, for, for presenting. I do have one question, and perhaps other people have questions as well. I was just wondering how the outreach is done to let students know or families know about this program?
Yeah, we, well, we, Lisa and Megan really send out, you know, communications via email and the school, school email. You know, frequently, so students apply to be in the calculus project, they have to fill out a basic application. And we do that, so we, we also communicate directly with teachers and let them know, you know, about the program. All teachers in the math department know about it, so we're always recruiting, you know, letting our students of color know about the calculus project, so, for example, I had a couple of students of color in my class this year who weren't part of the calculus project, and I talked to them about it and, you know, got them signed up, so we use the teachers, the height, the math teachers to do that, we use parents to do that, and we use, in the middle school, you know, we communicate with the seventh and eighth grade math teachers, as well as Matt Rosenthal, to get that information out to the, to the teachers, who then can also translate, transfer that to the, to the students and the parents.
Great, thank you, does anyone else have any questions about the summer program? Susan?
Um, yeah, thanks, Josh, thank you, Lisa, and Megan, I just want to ask one question. In prior years, we've had some discussions about students who might not want to participate for financial reasons, in the sense that they needed jobs, or this was kind of at a time when they needed the income, or they couldn't sort of get mornings off. I'm curious if we've, we're finding that this year. And if so, if there's anything we can do about it, or just how we're thinking about that.
Yeah, Susan, that's a great question, we, you know, that is a concern of ours, we see a drop-off in attendance in the summer program as the students get into 11th and 12th grades because they are going out and getting jobs. And also because I think the program is really successful in grades seven, eight, and nine, and 10, and they don't need it as much. Like, the goal is that they, they, they may not need the support as much as they, as they move up through the math, math program and have received, you know, years and years of summer work. To answer your question, yeah, we haven't made a lot of progress in seeing how we can facilitate, you know, helping students get, get jobs and still be able to participate. We try to be flexible in when we, you know, when we offer the, the, well, the, the hours of the program so that students can attend and still, you know, get summer jobs. There are a lot of different types of summer jobs, so we can't, you know, we can't make that work for everyone, but we have talked about doing the calculus project at different times for the juniors and seniors. And sort of settled on, I believe, that, you know, the, like, running it in the morning is actually, actually, you know, allows students to, to be able to get, you know, afternoon and evening work. You know, it's a goal of ours to You know, it's a goal of ours to, you know, look for partners, really, and to see what we can do to help those, our students, you know, get summer employment and still be able to participate. Hasn't happened yet.
Yeah. No, that's helpful, and I guess if the ratio is something like 1 to 10, or 1 to 12, if I'm doing the math right. And it also just strikes me that, given everything we've learned about, you know, distance learning, if there were some critical mass of students who this was the barrier, is there some way to offer either an evening or a weekend remote? Not that, not that a high schooler would want to work all week during the summer and then sit down and do math, but, but maybe they would. And so, at any rate, I'm just wondering if we can, I don't know, just get a sense of that, and if it's not a large number, if there's something we can do about it. But, but no, I absolutely appreciate the answer. It's a hard one that we haven't totally figured out.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I mean, we have learned a lot about distance learning this year, and I think we will be more flexible educators moving forward. And I think we have always been in the Calculus Project very flexible. So perhaps we can, you know, perhaps if there are some students who can't attend in the morning, we can, could offer some sort of virtual support for them as well. It's a good idea.
Okay, anyway, or just even videotaping them. They can watch it like a podcast. I don't, I don't know. I don't want to program it, but just something. But anyway, thank you for keeping it in mind.
Sure. Andy, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm just wondering if there were more resources. Do you think there would be enough interest to justify trying to extend the program to people who have just graduated from high school and are going on to college and could use some exposure to college-level math before they jump in?
That's a good question. I don't know, you know, if there's, how much interest there is. Again, I think a lot of high school graduates are looking to work in the summer before they go off to college, and so may not, you know, may not be all that interested. They also may be wanting to take a break of learning between high school and college, so it's a, it's a good question, though, and, you know, we could certainly think about that. If additional funding were available, we could, you know, talk to our 12th-grade students and see what the interest is for doing something like that. It's an interesting idea.
It's just such a difficult transition often to college-level math, and the best way to do well in college math is to have actually taken it before, so.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has questions about this part of our summer programming?
Yeah, Jennifer. Yeah, thanks. Mine's kind of a philosophical question, Josh, but is the program just open to anybody? I mean, students of color, but who are interested in math, and is there a distinction maybe between kind of remediation and enrichment? Or is it just kind of open to anybody, no matter where your level of math is when you join?
So it's open to everyone, all students of color. The focus is on helping students be successful in our, some of our, you know, our honors and higher-level math courses. That was the goal of the project originally. In the summer, we take all students, and different years, we do different things. Sometimes we, you know, have all of the 10th graders in the same class, regardless of what math class they're in. Sometimes we separate them out, you know, depending on what level math class they're in, and offer remediation for the students who need it, and enrichment for the students who need enrichment. So we do do that in the summer. During the school year, the focus is more on supporting the students, you know, who are in, you know, who are in the pathway to get to a calculus course in 12th grade, and part of that is to, to, to look at students who aren't on that pathway and helping, you know, figuring out what we can do to help them get there. So working with students to level up, for example, from our standard level to our honors level. We have been, Lisa and Megan and I have been talking about, about that this, you know, this winter, and, you know, are working with some students in ninth-grade teachers whose students are interested in leveling up to honors in grade 10 and providing supports for them. So I guess to answer your question, yes, we do. You know, we offer lots of programming for, you know, all students of color with a focus on, I think, you know, preparing our students of color for high-level mathematics.
Thank you. Great. Are there other questions? Thank you so much, Josh and Lisa. So now Brendan Cobus is going to talk with us about another summer program through the high school.
Hi, folks. Thanks for having me. I hope everyone can hear me. So I'm Brendan Cobus. I'm the director of the Brooklyn High School Summer School. I'm also an associate dean at the Old Lincoln School with the ninth grade. So the summer school story is actually an interesting story because last year, we were enforced into making some changes, and come to find out, many of those changes worked out quite well. A little bit about what Susan and Josh were just talking about in terms of flexibility for students. So last year, we were fully online in the summer, out of abundance of caution, and it turns out that that flexibility and structure actually helped more students access summer school, and we had more students recover credit than in any previous summer. So we are thinking about the lessons that we learned last summer and how we can apply them, and how we can support the most kids this summer. We do plan on offering summer school June 28 through July 30. The times here are typical of what we have done with in-person, but given that we want to reach as many students as possible, we are trying to be creative in terms of what we're going to offer, when, what is synchronous, what is asynchronous, what will be in-person, what will be online. What we do know is that we will have one director and likely nine teachers. These are all Brooklyn High School teachers. Many of our teachers last summer were dual-certified in special education and their content areas. They did an incredible job, went above and beyond in supporting kids, sometimes at all hours of the day, and sometimes far into August to help them achieve their summer goals. It is funded through, well, it's, last summer was funded through the Office of Teaching and Learning. Again, as Meg mentioned, you know, we will look into funding this year to figure out how we can offer the best possible program. It is tuition-based. We do offer financial assistance. We have offered credit recovery classes, and last summer really sort of narrowed our focus on to credit recovery remediation. But we do offer some original credit classes, particularly in the elective areas and the visual arts. This summer, we will also be offering a 10th-grade wellness class, which is a new requirement starting next year, and there's already a lot of interest in that. One of the things that helped us be really successful last year was we really built up our partnership with Steps to Success, Metco, and the Brookline Center. We were, had weekly meetings on how we could support kids best, and sort of, you know, the whole kid. The Brookline Center was incredible. Our bright program at the high school worked through the summer to support some of their students. So that's BHS Summer School, sort of snapshot. You know, we're hoping to do something very similar this year, expand it a little further, but we were really proud of the work last summer and hope to duplicate that.
Brendan, can you just mention how much it costs and how students get chosen or recommended for the program?
Sure. The courses, I believe, range between $300 and $450. The students are referred to us by their deans, by their guidance counselors, by their teachers. Typically, it's students who have struggled in a course or have not passed a course. So we meet in the days towards the end of school in June, and in the additional days that the guidance counselors and deans work, we speak with students about what their summer needs are in terms of credit so that they can progress towards graduation.
Are there questions for Brendan about the program?
I have a question. The part of this is funded by, some of this is funded by tuition, and then part of it is also funded through BHS and the Office of Teaching and Learning. Do you, so two things, I guess. Do you feel that you have enough budget, or that 120 students is enough spots for all of the students that you think that you'll need to service? And then also, what is the, do we have an estimate on the cost of the budget? If there were additional funds, like we talked about with the ELE program, what would the cost be to, say, do another 120 students? So what does it cost on our, on the school side versus the tuition? Does that make sense?
Sure. So there's always a gap. It doesn't fully self-fund. And, you know, I think the tuition is worth discussing, but I think, you know, like Josh had mentioned and others, there is a little bit of buy-in there that is helpful with the tuition. And, you know, but we would like to sort of get that right, and we do offer financial assistance for those that need it. In terms of the size and scope of the program, in years past, we had offered some enrichment opportunities. We had also offered original credit classes. We'd really seen dwindling enrollment in those courses. You know, as much as the teachers do an incredible job of being welcoming and creating a great summer experience, you know, high schoolers are pulled in a lot of directions in the summer, whether that be camp, work, travel, those things. So as we had seen the numbers dwindle in the enrichment programs, it didn't make sense for them to be necessarily housed within summer school, and we really wanted to focus on the credit recovery and the remediation work. And, you know, it was an enforced change last summer, but a very successful one. You know, that being said, we'll have to look closely at, you know, how high school students are trending. You know, I know it's been a successful year for, for many teachers and for many kids throughout the high school, and we don't expect any larger number of students to not pass classes, so I don't necessarily see needing more, but we'll, we'll have a better sense of that come the fourth quarter, I think.
Great. So do you, so you, your feeling at this time is that 120, 120 spots will be, will meet the needs of the students? Or do you anticipate more spots? I guess that's what I was trying to sort of.
Yeah, it's not necessarily spots. I mean, that's a ballpark number, and we can take on more. I will be curious to see how many rising 10th graders are interested in taking the 10th-grade wellness class. And there is potential that we might need to hire one more staff member if there's a lot of interest in that class because we want to be able to open that to as many students as possible. So that number could go up, and if we needed to add one more teacher, the cost wouldn't be incredibly significant. It would add to the cost, but, you know, that depends on if we keep the tuition the same too. Sometimes some of the courses end up funding themselves.
So, Helen?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. And maybe I'll start with the last first. So that wellness course is a half semester course, right?
The 10th-grade wellness course next year is actually a quarter-credit course.
Right, a quarter-credit, so it's half of a half semester.
So, you know, the amount of times it meets this summer will be determined by the content that needs to be delivered. It may not even take the full five weeks for that course to be taught. It's sort of being built right now. I've been working with Carlin. What the course will look like, and we're trying to, to be creative and yet keep real integrity to the course and deliver the, the learning that the students deserve.
And this will allow those kids then to take a full semester course or a full-year course if they don't have to put that into their schedule, correct? Is that the idea?
That is. That is the idea, although, you know, students that want to keep that in their schedule next year will still have lots of room for electives and choice in a full schedule next year.
So the other question I had is that summer school in the past has always been in a revolving fund. Is it still a revolving fund?
No, I think that, so a couple of different things. It's a little complicated. As the Office of Teaching and Learning felt, I think similarly to the Project Discovery Course, where we wanted to fund students that hadn't, you know, been able to achieve their credit during the school year. So it was partially funded through the Office of Teaching and Learning. The, as, as I think Brendan mentioned a couple of times, the, the school's never really been self-sustained.
We've had a deficit every year since I think I've been on the school committee. There hasn't been, and nothing about you, Brendan, but there hasn't been one coordinator who's been able to, to, to provide. Actually, there are very few school systems, I think, that provide summer school.
Right.
Yes, I should add that we did last year make the decision to only allow Brookline students. We really wanted to focus on.
So are there other questions? Helen, did you have another question? Or Suzanne? I think I saw Suzanne's hand up.
Yeah, I did. I think Brendan might have answered a little bit, but I just would urge us to keep a close watch on, you know, the need for credit recovery. Certainly in many districts, there has been a lot of absenteeism and students who are struggling. It's, it's great to hear you don't think that has happened at BHS, but I just would urge us to, you know, as we get closer to the end of the year, have a better sense of who needs credit recovery and how that may happen. Just during this pandemic year, it's an unusual year. I think some students who need extra support have struggled to get through this year. So, you know, I hope that we can meet the needs of those students that are interested in summer school with that extra support, that we can meet their needs.
Without a doubt, yeah. That will be a continuing conversation throughout the year at the high school. And, you know, we have staff that's ready to meet the needs this summer, no matter what those numbers are. So I think, you know, we're well-placed to do that.
Susan, did you have another question?
Oh, yeah, I did. Barbara also did, but I'm happy to go, just quickly, Brendan, two questions. One is that, and I think this is a version of Suzanne's question, but like, if students need, either they have an identified need across multiple classes in a particular year, and I'm not quite sure how the, how the day is structured, but if they have multiple classes that they need credit recovery for, or they've just struggled in the sense that they've passed, but there are pretty significant holes or gaps. I guess are, are teachers kind of recalibrating this year? I mean, there's, there's one way to do it where what the teacher has in mind is, okay, we're roughly going to get 100 kids into this. There's another way to think about it, which is everyone who has, you know, been, I don't know, some, some level or below in terms of gaps, needs to kind of get identified. And whether it's this or something else, there is some sort of attention to just what that pool is, which is really different from prior years. So it might be in addition to summer school. I'm not sure, but I guess those are my two questions, that they have identified needs, but then also the conversation among faculty around, do we need sort of a bigger net? A bigger catchment net this year, a different way to think about, about it beyond sort of the steady-state kids who come through.
For sure. Those are important points. Students can take more than one class in summer school. And typically with the structure of in-person, it was at the most they could take two. Last year, we did have some students take three because of the way we structured the schedule, which was incredibly helpful. But I think you're right, that the second part of that question, I think, is a bigger question and discussions that we are having at the high school. having at the high school and what will the fall look like in terms of assessing learning? And definitely something that's in the forefront of our minds and, and summer school might play a role in supporting that. And, yeah, at this point, we're not, we don't have an answer concretely, but I think you're right. It's definitely important.
Barbara, did you want to go next?
Yes. Excuse me. One of the things that was very successful during the summer last year was a course run based on the Whipple gift to the schools, which was a writing course. I am wondering if we have given any thought to having in the summer school, a course or two that would be not for people who needed to make up credit, but something that we didn't necessarily offer during the school year, like a poetry, a poetry writing course for five or six weeks, or some sort of art course. There are all kinds of things, if you begin to think that we could do that are not really part of our program, but there might be things that children would like to do during the summer and would benefit from. I'm, I, it may be something that at this point in time is too much to think about, but I really wish we could do something that would allow students to stretch themselves in a direction that they would like to move into.
I think you're right. And I, I think that there's a couple of pieces there. Certainly, you know, to judge the interest, again, I think high schoolers are pulled in a lot of directions in the summer. I do have the same questions of Mindy. You know, we've heard some families say, I think, you know, my student is waiting for this summer to just sort of, you know, check out, be away from school for a short period of time to recharge. But there are some students that do want that enrichment. And, you know, I've always felt that if we promote something well enough, we can create a robust program. I think then the second part of that would be, does it live under summer school? Where does it sit budgetarily? You know, it could. It doesn't necessarily have to. The Whipple Fellowship was incredible. That came from a grant. I have talked with the, the teachers that were most heavily involved, Jen Martin and Dan Bresman. And we did talk about if that's something that could live in summer school in the future. So it's a conversation that's already begun, but I think there would be questions of just where does it sit budgetarily?
Thank you. There any other questions? Seeing none. Okay. Thank you, Brendan.
Oops. Oops. There we go. Great. So I'm, I'm just going to speak very briefly on behalf of Joanna Lieberman and Christine Gray, who run Project Discovery, which has been a wonderful literacy recovery program for the past years. I mean, at least five or six years. And this is a partnership between the ELA department and REC because we pair this project with summer camp. It goes from July 6th to July 30th this year and it's 8:30 to 12, Monday through Friday. It will be in person at Runkel. This year, because of social distancing and the, and the budget, this comes out of Title I funding. We'll be able to serve 128 students, K to two. And Michelle can also speak to this, but OTL made a decision. Normally this might be a K to five program, but we really wanted the, the very focused instruction with our early literacy, the students that are, are developing early literacy. So we do provide transportation for students who are in the MEKO program, who are accessing this, this program. And again, REC will offer the enrichment at a separate cost and there is tuition, not tuition, but financial assistance for families. The, the program consists of director and assistant director, interventionists. I'm having 16 teachers, basically one program aide. We'll have eight classrooms with two teachers per classroom. And this is free for participating families. So a couple of years ago, the Office of Teaching and Learning felt very strongly that, you know, students who did not, were not able to access, for whatever reason, learning during the school year. It was our responsibility to provide those opportunities for a public education during this summer. So the program last summer was able to serve approximately, I believe, 150 students and it was remote. And that was $85,000. This year, it's going to be approximately $110,000. We're a little bit off with our Title I funding, but we anticipate being able to supplement some of that from the Office of Teaching and Learning budget. And again, one of the, to ensure the classrooms are small and the students will be getting the most individualized intervention, we have two teachers per classroom. So 16 students per classroom with two teachers means a one to eight ratio. Students are chosen based on and invited. This is not a, you know, a volunteer program or a program that is put out to the larger community. They, students have to be invited and the office, the ELA office sends out approximately 500 invitations a summer. And depending on who responds back, they will invite them. Our program at one point was as large as 180 students. So this is significantly less. But we are focusing more on the younger, the early literacy, kids with early literacy skills. So. So that is Project Discovery. Are there questions that I might, I, I don't know that I'll be able to answer all of them, but I'm glad to take them. Helen?
Yeah, I have a question, a couple of questions, actually. You said it was 85,000 last year for 150 students and this year it's 110,000 for 128 students. Why? Why would it cost more for less students?
Because it's in person. And so in order to do the social distancing and to make sure that we can, you know, work with students safely, the, you know, Joanna's team has developed their program this way. We felt it was more important, especially with intervention services, the kids are in person. It's very difficult remotely.
Yeah. Oh, I agree. I'm, I'm pleased that it's in person. I think that's great. I'm just surprised that we would have less kids who would need it this year than in years past.
I think we have, I mean, I, I would say that we may need, we, this is an example of if we had more funding. And, and again, Michelle, I don't know if you want to speak to this. Michelle and I have had a number of conversations about this and the need for this program.
Yeah. So I think, I think the thing is, is that we're looking at what the state's going to be offering us for funding for the rest of the summer. And so I, we want to be able to expand or add any of these programs as we can, and we just don't have that number yet. We should have that very shortly though, but we wanted to give you what we knew we could fund today and then go forward from there. And I think the other thing, just to call it out, is we know we are missing our three to five students here and we are working on that. And we're hoping that, we're thinking that the additional funding will allow us to put in a solid place for them to attend the summer as well.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, you mentioned the three to five and that was, I had two questions, which is, one is about how we can meet the needs of our three through fives and also our middle school. I haven't, so I've heard conversation about the high school calculus project, you know, our ELE and MEKO families and now K through two. So I'm just wondering what our next steps are for three through five in middle school.
So can I, I think that's a great question. And Michelle and I were planning on talking a little bit about that, but can I finish this part of the presentation? Because I think that's part two, which is, you know, what are we doing moving forward? Michelle, is that okay with you? Great. Any other questions about Project Discovery? So I'm just going to quickly just talk a little bit about challenges and potential opportunities. This may be a little bit redundant, but right now, we really need, I mean, and I think frankly, what we're going to be facing this summer will go on for a few years, meaning that we're really going to need to have some solid programming for general ed students as well as our special education students, as well as our special populations of students that might need more support during summers. We don't really have a director of summer programs to ensure this, you know, the mission and cohesiveness of this program. What you're seeing, which is very exciting, as Brendan and Mindy and Josh started talking about is because we have our summer programs meeting, people are starting to collaborate because we meet once a month and then they'll work outside of these meetings to develop collaborations. But to really have a strong cohesive program, there needs to be, I think, a, a director that pulls this all together along with the Office of Teaching and Learning and the Office of Student Support to ensure, you know, continuity with our essential curriculum and our social emotional goals and all of that. At this point, we don't have identified funding, other than what I think Helen or Jennifer may have mentioned around the 150,000. We're not sure that that isn't going to pay for VHS summer school and the calculus project. That's something we need to get clarity on from Mary Ellen. We have space limitations. We have two buildings, I think, that may be offline this summer because there are different things that are happening. Driscoll and we don't really use Driscoll anyway, but VHS is going to be offline for obvious reasons, some parts of it. We don't have a lot of time to develop additional summer programs, although we certainly have a very amazing and talented staff that I think would, you know, jump to this. And Michelle and I have already started this conversation. But we do need eventually, whatever program, general ed program we develop, we're going to need to have funded. And as you all know, we don't have a lot of time, but the potential opportunity here is that there is potential DESI and federal funding for an accelerated acceleration and recovery academy that has not come out yet. So that's what Michelle is talking about in terms of, we don't yet know from the state. So all of this is sort of, again, you know, up in, up in the air a little bit. But just wanted to kind of put those things out there and, you know, ask, you know, Michelle, what Jennifer just said, you know, our three to five population as well as our more general ed programming, what we can do and what we've been talking about doing in terms of expanding what we offer. So that was a lot to kind of like rush through, but you know, it's a lot of opportunities. So.
Don't we also offer extended school year for kids on IAPs? And how is that done? Are they integrated into these programs or?
They're not. We've, we've talked about that. They're not into, they're integrated into some of the recreation. We have partnerships between ESY and Recreation. And so, and I'm not sure if Casey's still on, but. So, you know, Melissa Divine is actually, you know, oversees our ESY programs. They, and they're wonderful. As I pointed out earlier in the presentation, we offer them from pre-K through 12. But again, you know, those opportunities for collaboration, we don't really have a general ed program per se to develop a collaboration with them.
Wasn't there a project achieved or has that all been folded into Project Discovery?
It's all been folded into Project Discovery. So now we've, we used to be Project Achieve, Project Discovery and
Launch.
Launch, correct. And now beep launch is an enrichment program. So it's not beep launch anymore.
So where's that? Did we hear about that one?
No, because it's not an academic program right now. So we have four academic programs offered through the, through the summer partners program.
Does anyone else have questions? Susan, is that a hand?
It is. Yeah. And I, we might get to this in the next section, but I guess sort of, it's, it's sort of a halfway question, halfway coming, but it just feels like we have such a very different set of kids coming into this summer than we've had from prior summers. And it definitely, I definitely understand the notion of like, this is the budget we have. What can we do with the budget we have? And I absolutely appreciate that. I guess what I'm a little concerned about though, is that if we don't kind of pull the camera back and sort of think more, like sort of more holistically, it's going to be hard for us to be able to advocate for funding if we don't know what the full need is. Pre-K through 12, academic, not just literacy, you know, three through five, middle school, like there's a whole, I mean, three through eight, really. And then even the earlier kids, something other than just literacy. I don't know. But I guess I'm, I'm trying to sort of think about what is our sort of, how are we thinking about that so that we can get an accurate gauge on, on what might be needed and then sort of size it. Because I think if we start off at 120 and then we start to think about trying to add, we'll get to a different answer from if we start with our population and then sort of think through who has substantial enough gaps that they might need additional support, either during the summer or during the year. But you just kind of get to maybe a different answer that way, if that makes sense.
Any other questions?
Well, well.
Sorry, go ahead. What, you want, they nodded and I was like, I don't know. Do we have a response for that?
Well, we, okay. So if we don't have a response, I, I mean, it feels to me like that does feel like a top priority. So, so what, so if I'm the only one that feels like that's a top priority, that's fine. If the school committee feels like that's a top priority, we need to kind of give that feedback and we need to figure out what questions we have and what kind of answers we might need. So it's not like money is no object, but I also feel like if, unless we understand the demand, the need, it's going to be really hard for us to advocate for anything else. And we're just going to keep going on the 100 kid train. And I don't think the money, I don't think the money is the, I don't think it's the issue. I think it's, like you said, stepping back, working with the coordinators to determine what is needed for students and then putting the program forth. And so I think one of the places we did start with what funding we have always available to us and to start, and then you're right, we have to, that's where we're moving towards. So I think one of the things that, I think one of the things we had is there are some very specific needs that we already know about, and those are the things that were addressed in the current, in the programs that were put forth today. And then you're right, we're not done by any means. So. To just, just so I have a sense, like what is the timeline of trying to figure that out? Because I'm also aware that budget, you know, we're in the middle of budget season and everything. So what, how are we thinking about sort of figuring that out? It also feels like, yeah, and maybe it's just the coordinators. It might be others as well, but. Oh, go ahead, Meg.
I was going to say that we are, Michelle and I are in conversation about that. We're going to be meeting with the coordinators to talk about this, to try to get, to try to gauge the, our, our bench strength right now. As we all know that this is as much about a bench strength question in doing something well and thoughtfully as it is about, you know, and it is necessary. I mean, we have, we have two separate things. We have academics and we also have social emotional needs as we get kids ready to come back to school in the fall. And we've heard loud and clear from our parents that, you know, that I think two things, one is that people are fatigued and need a break, but also that how are we preparing our kids to come back to in-person learning in the fall? And what programs can we offer over the summer that might do that? And to do that, we need to, you know, meet with the coordinators, see, ascertain bench strength as well as need and put something together. And until we have sort of a, an outline of that, we don't know what it, what it may cost. And to, and to actually see what is the interest in school and with parents? How many parents would want to send their kids, you know, to, to summer programs for this particular thing? So Michelle, I don't, you know, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that or? No, great. We can certainly come back to you. I mean, this is a, you know, it is absolutely on our minds as we, as we move forward. Really appreciate.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm really, I'm concerned about making sure that we're able to catch, capture the K through two kids, but also I just really want to reiterate sort of like, we're missing that piece for three, five and six, eight. That I'm really concerned, like we don't have any offerings right now for them. And that's really concerning. So I think what I heard was sort of like,
I think what I heard was sort of like trying to gather some interest on some interest on families that might be interested in attending, like having a summer program, but also you know, and we need some sort of idea from the educators about how many kids they think they need to refer. And sort of that information gathering would be very helpful to Susan's point, one of her points, which is talking about the budgetary implications for this. And so I'm really hopeful that we'll get some extra money, not extra, but additional funding from this next round of money from the federal government. And I would love to see a part of that to, to figure out how many more kids we would need in K through two, but then also to address the needs in three through five and six through eight, because we don't have anything on the, on the board for them right now. And that, that's just, I know there's, I know there has to be a need and we just have to figure out what that is. And if we can start gathering some of that information now while we're waiting for the funding information to come in, we would be better provided, but in a better position to sort of hit the ground running when the funding comes through. And I'm sure that you're thinking about these things, but I just, it's very compelling that we just don't have anything on the board right now for that. And I'm really concerned about that. I think I saw Barbara's hand and then I also just wanted to let, if panelists have not had an opportunity to look at the chat, there's a number of comments from members of our community that are sharing some of their thoughts with us about, I think the first one from a community member is specifically about AP English, and I'm not sure if that is in regards to summer programming or just additional BHS programming. And then there's another comment about the BHS health course, and I'm not sure if anyone here could speak to that specific piece about the need to offer the 10th grade BHS health course. And then there's a third comment about additional programming. Starting now into, into the next school year. I'm not sure that we're set up for that, but I would leave that to others to, to speak. I don't, I just don't think we have the infrastructure set up to do that right now, but if someone could address that, that would be helpful.
I think that the health course, it's probably best, I mean, I don't know, Michelle, if Carlin was on this call with the other coordinators.
No, and I, I think the question was more about, if I read the question right, it's more about a parent needing to pay for a course that wasn't offered. So I need to circle back with Carlin on that before I give a reasonable answer.
That would be great if we could, we could circle back on that and understand a little bit more about that health and wellness course and, and the need, you know, the, the interest in offering it in the summer and what will happen for, you know, rising 10th graders or rising 11th graders and where they fall in that process. So I, I mean, I think one of the other comments is, is addressing, I'm sorry, Barbara, I promise I will stop talking and then, and I'm very interested in your questions as well. There's another one about, we've been talking sort of about this idea of parent interest and student need versus some parents feeling like their kids need to take a break or high school kids or other kids needing a break from that programming in the summer. And so there's, it's a tough balance. And I think that's true in any given year, but I think it's especially dichotomous right now. And so, you know, there may be kids we want to invite that whose families don't, you know, choose to enroll them and then we just sort of have to navigate all of that. And it's very helpful to us to have an understanding, like an informal sort of survey from educators and maybe an informal survey from parents about their interest. If they were recommended, would they enroll their children? I'm sorry, Barbara, you're up.
This, in a sense, is not unlike what I asked about the high school or what I suggested for the high school, but it strikes me that for students who have been in and out of school are not comfortable necessarily going back or worried about their friendships and so forth. It certainly would be easy enough to add something like over a period of two weeks. Have a, have a book discussion group running for, maybe you'd go for a couple of hours each morning twice a week, talking about a book that you were reading, doing some activities with it. Just sort of a, a very low key language arts kinds of program. There are lots of kids who love to read at all ages. There are also a lot that have difficulty with it, but I'm thinking about just the sense of getting children back into the classroom and interacting with their peers and with a teacher in a school setting for a small period of time over the summer. It might really be helpful to some kids and might make them more excited about going back in the fall if in fact it hadn't been so long since they had been in school. I don't know. I think that, I think that the issues around the social emotional issues are really important. And it might be much easier for us if we could do something over the summer to help students reacquaint themselves with school in a way that was not so difficult. I mean, reading a book and talking about it with your friends is something a lot of kids like. They could do a drama presentation. There are all kinds of things you could do. And I, I'm, I'm just wondering if that kind of thing would be helpful.
I mean, does the panel, I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, we've had these wonderful panels that have supported the school committee and thinking through, you know, pieces of how this year is going to go. Would it be, I, you know, I don't know if it's helpful to, you know, help have the panel help us think through like, you know, summer programming or what, what is the, you know, what parents need and have the appetite for and, you know, what we could offer and you know, sorry, Susan, I see. I'm thinking about the cat.
I'm sorry. Let me, let me go off video. I think I'm sort of, the, the cat bomb is sort of.
Mine does the same thing, but, but just, I just think that this is, you know, in this year again, we have this partnership issue too, like, you know, with, with the community. You know, we have such resources in our community, maybe they could be helpful in helping us to think through what we could do. You know, again, speaking to, you know, a book group or, or things to help kids get acclimated back into school or you know, how.
Maybe some project-based learning that, you know, would be fun to do in the summer. I mean, I think we need to think about fun educational things, you know, things that kids really get excited about. I mean, I remember my kids went to, when they were really young, to the Science Museum for classes and had incredible, you know, they do, they weren't excited about going to school in the summer, but once they were there, they loved it. It was two weeks of, and it incorporated language and science and math and you know, everything was incorporated into the project. And, you know, if you had two or three of those over the summer that kids could join, you know, maybe for a week or two, it would solve the social emotional stuff that Barbara's talking about. And, you know, get them sort of back into things, be able to evaluate some of the issues they might have. Tanya Gregoire, I think, was the science person who did that and she was a teacher in Brookline, if I'm not mistaken. I may be wrong, but that's my recollection.
I, you know, I, I want to sort of add on to that, that the idea that learning is fun and hands-on and interdisciplinary, which is something we've talked about at a prior curriculum subcommittee meeting. You know, I'd like us to think about if, if we're having to sort of think about, we don't have an existing structure maybe right now for the three to five and the six to eight as we create it, you know, if, if we have to design a program. I would love for us to think about designing a program around those sort of parameters, you know, and that hopefully will engage, you know, get kids to want to come and engage in that work together. We are.
Also, we should be aware too that the, I'm sorry to interrupt you. The Adult Ed is going to be running courses this summer. I'm not sure what they're running, but we.
Smart summers. And so they'll be doing a lot of enrichment the way they have in, in other years, depending on what the, again, buildings, because I think Unified Arts is, is not open to us, but they run a lot of arts and crafts and outdoor adventure camp, cooking, some really wonderful things, so.
I think that's a great thing that we can also, you know, publicize to families that there are these opportunities that are of reasonable cost that are enrichment opportunities for students and social experiences, you know, I'm assuming that they're going to be able to run their programs, the base programs in person this summer. Is that accurate? Okay.
Also, they're running them in April vacation, so that you're aware.
So smart vacations are starting up again, and we need people to support BASE. That's the other piece as we, they're such a wonderful organization, they're celebrating hundreds of years and, and because of the pandemic, they really need folks to support them with attending programs, so.
The Festival of Learning is coming up next week. If people are interested in that, you can go to their website and it's a seventy-five dollar pass for the week, unlimited opportunities. And there's some amazing, there's an there's an astronaut, there's sommeliers, there's all sorts of adult, and there's things that I think our young people would also be interested in at different times of the day. So we do want to support them. Like all of our community partners as well. Do we have, we are well beyond our allocated time for this and it's now five twenty-five and we haven't hit the second part of our program. Are there any, Andy, you had a question?
Yeah, I did. Thanks. So this kind of goes back to Susan's about what we need in order to advocate effectively for funding. And it's specifically about project discovery because that one is, has such a clearly defined purpose with a presumably measurable outcome. Like, you know, what do we do to sort of measure or assess the impact of that program on the kids who are in it? Because that could, you know, knowing that is really helpful in arguing for money to extend it to more kids.
Well, we definitely use data to measure our student reading levels and that's a huge piece of it. They, the program is a, you know, an organized program. They've been developing over many years. They use assessments to ascertain student reading level and stamina around reading. Practice books, choosing, choosing, you know, having kids get excited about reading. They do projects during the summer. So there are measurable outcomes for that and we have, because of our Title One program, worked with our data office, we haven't been able to use what we developed this year because the assessments that have to be given are given in person. So all of the things that we developed this year are on hold, but we do have a formula that we developed in conjunction with Title One that, you know, clearly shows students, you know, progress in terms of their ability to read and and sustain it. And so I think that, you know, and I'm sure Joanna has come and spoken to curriculum subcommittee too, but there's, you know, you know, if we could come back and talk more about that, if that's helpful. Because that is part of seeing, you know, we're running this program, how, how is it doing? And Title One also mandates us to do that because it's that funding that we're using, so.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions about our summer program? It, it sounds to me like we will hopefully revisit this as soon as we find out about additional funding and then we'll circle back around and see what additional things that we can try to offer.
And thank you for all the work that you've done so far in getting all this up and running. I mean, that's important too.
Yeah, I would like to make sure we thank Meg and Michelle, as well as Mindy, Paolo, Josh, Paris, Lisa Rodriguez, Brendan Cobus for, for coming today and gathering that information so that we can sort of reflect on that. So I really appreciate that. Okay, so we'll, we'll look to come back to, to revisit this additional piece. So we sort of got a base understanding of what we currently offer with the hope that we can, we can offer additional programming. That would be my sincere hope that. I mean, I would like, I would like us to consider if we, what happens if we don't get that additional funding? What are we, what can we do? What is going to happen? How are we going to meet the needs of these kids? If we don't get that funding, what, in what ways can we be creative to sort of figure out how we could, we could do this? I don't, and I don't know what that is, but I'd love to hear some recommendations or possibilities. I don't know if we have community partners. I, I just don't know if there are grants, you know, like local community grants.
I don't think the funding's going to be an issue.
Okay, so, so.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Okay, so that's good. So maybe we spend more of our energy on right now is sort of figuring out how many, what are teacher recommendations and referrals? What are we looking at for numbers and kind of depth and breadth of programming? And do we have enough, you know, well, not that that's a limiting factor, but you know, are there teachers that are interested in, in, in working this summer to do this work? I'm sure that we can, I'm sure that's not, but it just, it's part of the information gathering process. And then of those students that we would like to invite, what is the parent interest or the availability of students to come? Because that is another part of the equation. All right, so sort of debating what we're going to do now that it's five thirty. I know school committee has another meeting this evening, so do you have a recommendation? I know, Michelle, that you have prepared for us and I do not want to not recognize all of that work in preparing for this meeting.
Yeah, no, I was looking at the time. I know you all have another school committee meeting tonight, so. And actually, the, the coordinators that came with me, the, of two of them are still here, but I know that they have five thirty calls as well. So I'm going to leave it to you to kind of determine where we go next.
Well, so I see Emily and Alicia, is that, those are our two?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're two when then a couple had to go to the Runcle, I mean, the Driscoll principal interviews.
Okay, so I, this, I feel terrible right now. There is nothing worse than coming to a meeting and then waiting for school committee to discuss and then not, I, I'm I'm sorry, Emily and Alicia, I do not want to be, we don't want to be disrespectful of your time, really, truly. I would love, I would love to have you come and discuss with us. This is such important work. I feel very passionate about. Our next topic was going to be that we were going to discuss our progress on essential curriculum. I definitely want to book this for the April meeting. It's super important. It is to me, and I think other people feel similarly, that this work is so instrumental in, in what we're going to do next year and how we're going to approach curriculum. And, and sort of those like really high level skills. So I, I feel terrible that our summer school conversation, which sort of needs to be addressed prior to thinking about next year because it leads into the timeline, but I, I feel terrible right now that you all have been here and spent your time. Do you have some comments for us?
It's really okay. We get it. It is the most unusual year of all of our careers. So, you know, you come to a meeting and we run out of time. That's not the worst case scenario. We're very excited about our presentation and where we are at and the work we are doing. You can get us to come to another meeting and talk about it then. We're good at that, that's for sure. So don't worry about that. The summer is upon us and for the things that you're looking to add to it, this is the time that has to be done. So we will keep working. We're not stopping and we'll come again.
And you have the document that we were going to present today. So Jennifer, maybe even I can walk you through it offline and you can share out with the, with the rest of the group so that the next iteration will be sort of a little bit expanded from there. And I have to tell you, like, the curriculum coordinators are awesome and really good at being able to communicate this back. So I really appreciate their help in preparing that document. I just want to make sure everybody knows that they were part of it. And then, so I do, I do believe that we can come back. And I also think to your next topic, if I can just throw this out to you, the discussion on CST. I think that Casey and I can come back to the next meeting with a better place too, because we're working with a small group on a study of some, some overly identified students into, into special education. And we're finding that we're backing actually all the way up to taking a look at our CST process. So it would probably be better timing for that as well.
Yeah, so we knew we were only going to probably touch on that and just start to talk about that process. And I think it's really important and we'd love to hear more about that. So to the, to the curriculum subcommittee, I'd like to sort of put forth that our next April meeting, we first discuss the updates on the essential curriculum and then also have an update on the CST process and the information that you found and what you think the next steps are. Does that sound reasonable to the subcommittee? Go ahead.
Yes, but, so do we have a meeting next week?
We, yes, we have a meeting. The panels are coming, panel, hopefully, one and two. I know two and three are definitely confirmed, panel one. I've got to work with Susan to follow up again on whether, on their availability. And if not, then what we might present from them. But yes, we have a meeting next week on the twenty-third to discuss, to hear from panels one, two and three on their work and findings. Keep going, Helen.
So I think it's great to do the stuff that we're talking about for next year in the April meeting, the twenty-seventh, right? Correct? Correct?
Robin, can you confirm, I'm sorry, just don't have my calendar pulled up right now in front of me.
Mine says.
Yes, I have April 27th as the next curriculum subcommittee.
But I'm concerned about the summer and sort of letting that pass. And if we wait till May, it's over. So when do you think that we may know more about what we might be able to, what the needs are, what we might be able to do and what monies might be available? I'm asking actually Meg, Michelle and Casey. At, at the middle of April? Does that make sense to, I, I mean, it's a lot of curriculum meetings, but it seems to me it's a really important topic.
I mean, that would be great.
Even if it's just an hour, it doesn't have to be.
I was just gonna say, if we could do, yeah, I, I think, because I think, I think today had more presentation to it and maybe what we can do is prepare a one-page document for you that outlines it all, get, and then provide that to you prior to the meeting, so we can just have a discussion.
That'd be great. And also to include maybe the extended school year stuff, which we didn't get to.
Sorry, I had to step away, I had a, a staff issue pop up.
Not to worry, not to worry.
But I'd be happy to present on ESY. And then one of the things that we are working on also is a compensatory plan over the summer potentially, that's separate from ESY for students who potentially experienced learning loss, aren't making progress on their IEP goals, but don't qual, aren't severe enough to qualify for ESY.
Okay, so that's. There's a lot of different pieces that you guys have all talked about that are really important. But just to make sure that we, we capture everybody would be great.
Helen, can you remind me of the, I don't think I have the capital meeting in my calendar.
Yeah, well, right now, we're scheduled, it's always the second Tuesday of the month.
13th, okay.
It is the 13th.
So that, that would leave us at April 20th. Do we think that that's too late to come back to the summer school conversation?
Isn't that vacation week?
So.
What about the?
Maybe we need a different day of the week.
Yeah, or the week before, is that too soon?
Is April 6th? Do you think you'll have more information?
Three weeks, it's three weeks.
Three weeks, Michelle?
It doesn't have to be that day.
There is a finance subcommittee meeting on the April 6th, 5 to 6:30. Okay, I was thinking maybe what about Wednesday, the 14th? What do people's schedules look like then? Barbara, how's your schedule then?
I can do that.
Yes, Susan, are you there? She had to step away for a minute, so I guess, well, let's, let's say for now, we'll have a potential date of Wednesday, April 14th. And we're just, I'd just like to confirm with Susan, because I'm, I'm sure she would like to be there. You know, like a, a four to five meeting on Wednesday, April 14th, specifically really just to focus on the new parts of the summer school conversation, you know, not to go through the whole presentation again, but just to focus on, you know, what does our funding look like? What additional programs and students can we service? How are we going to use this money? And what information that hopefully we've gathered from staff and families about their availability and interests or whatever information we're able to get at that time. And maybe some of that is too early. And I would love to talk also about the ESY and compensatory services. Do you think that that's something that you could give us an update on at the April 14th meeting?
So I am scheduled to go to hearing that entire week, but, but someone from my team can certainly speak to that. And Jennifer, just to make sure, there is ESY, which is completely separate.
Yes.
Some compensatory, I don't think we'll have, I mean, ideally, the budget would be set so that we can have an update on whether or not we can have this robust compensatory plan that we're thinking about for the summer. So let's hope by then we'll have an update.
Okay, ESY, so we'll, we'll put it on the agenda that way and hope. And we can always adjust it and if it, if it doesn't, if we're not able to talk about that, we'll just, we can just briefly say where we're at with that process and.
Yep. And so Jennifer, just to complicate things, we probably should have some kind of presentation to the entire school committee.
Okay.
So that would just be an overview.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, I'm just saying, you know, maybe after your April 14th, 15th meeting, we should schedule something so that not only for the school committee, but also for the public to hear.
Do you want that to be a formal presentation from staff or an update from curriculum subcommittee?
It should probably be something in between. It should probably be something more than just your update from curriculum, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be the whole presentation that you just received.
Okay, I'd be happy to work with Meg and Michelle on, you know, sort of what, maybe streamlining or whatever our final presentation is, I'd be happy to facilitate conversation and whatever, you know. However, I can be helpful, I'm happy to do that. What is the next meeting? I guess we won't really know Suzanne until the 14th, if we're ready to sort of go to the whole committee, but the next meeting after that is like the 15th, the day after that. I don't know if that will be too soon, but.
That might be too soon for you, I mean.
It's the 29th. 29th, yeah.
Yeah, I would say by the 29th of April, we should be prepared to share information with the public.
Okay.
I mean, I know this is, I know your meeting is a public meeting, but it doesn't get quite the, the coverage, the whole school committee does.
Well, that's a great idea, I think that's a great idea. Okay, so I think that we are going to meet next week to hear from panels one, two and three. And we invite everyone in the community to come and hear from them as well. And then we will have a, a potential meeting on Wednesday, April 14th, from four to five, to get an update on summer schools, to hear about ESY, summer programs and possible compensatory plan or ideas at that time. And then we'll have our regularly scheduled meeting on April 27th and we'll discuss the essential curriculum. And the second part of that meeting will be the CST, you know, the results of the work that people are doing right now and next steps. Does that sound reasonable to everyone? Okay, that's, it's a lot of good work and I do know it's a lot more, a lot of meetings, but I think it's really important to set us up for success for next year, so that's great.
Great.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody for coming. I thank you for all your time. Thank you, Casey, for also joining us and Meg and Michelle and to the members of the community for joining us. Have a great night, I'll see many of you later this evening.